I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for Tuesday, January 21st. At this moment, I would like to ask everyone to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next, we have special recognitions and presentations. Ashley Satterfield, Principal of United High School and staff. Would you please come up and go ahead and present?
So every single person is going to pop. No, we only have a few of us that are.
Maybe by then Jimmy will be here.
Okay, Dr. Manchin and Harrison County Board members, thank you for allowing myself and the staff of United High School the time this evening to discuss a matter with you all. The United High School building consists currently of 179 students from United High School, Evolution High School, Evolution Middle School, Options Pathway, and the Phoenix Program. Our students are our priority when it comes to the vision of our school. We address not only the academic, but also the social, emotional, physical, and sometimes basic needs of our at-risk students. We make sure they are fed at school and have the nutritional resources they need to go home for the weekend with the assistance of community donations. If our students need access to an ID, medical card, or other basic life skills, we connect them with the appropriate resources. For many of our students, we provide a sense of belonging. In my short tenure as Principal of United, I can attest to the traumatic life events that specific students experience. As professionals, many of us in this room cannot make sense of what these young students experience in life. In fact, many of us would not only have the ability to get out of bed and not go to work if we had to experience what they do, but what do our students do? After they live these heartbreaking events, they get up the next day and walk the hallways of United High School because school is where they feel safe and supported. Our students know that they will not be ignored. Our students know that they are known by name by me and many others in the building. They know that at least one, if not many adults, will check on them and make sure they have everything they need to survive in life. Our students know that their safety and well-being is our top priority. We show up to the funerals of families of current students and funerals of former students that left this world far too soon. The culture of safety, security, and knowing that they belong is a culture that we must conscientiously always maintain. There are days that culture is a challenge to maintain, but we always pull through. As we look to the future and what is to come of our programs and their location, I, along with the hard-working, loyal staff of United and all of its programs, ask that you consider the possibility of allowing us to move into the Wilsonburg Elementary location. The culture we maintain that is based on the safety and security of our students will be obtainable at the Wilsonburg location. From a location perspective, Wilsonburg provides a layout that allows us to know where our students are. In fact, from one location within the building, I could visibly see every program throughout the building. Wilsonburg is one floor that allows for staff and administration to respond to any concern within a timely fashion. There are minimal areas for students to hide in the Wilsonburg building. Students will be safely located within the walls of the building. Students will not be able to slip away unnoticed. Students will not be able to open doors and allow others or unfavorable illegal items into the school. Parking is sufficient enough to maintain the level of staff and student parking we currently have. Busing will be successful, it is now, without having to close a main road down at least four times a day. The green space can allow us to have our greenhouse and the multiple other projects that have been secured. In addition, the Fall Festival we have, it would be ideal to have the green space. The heating, cooling, kitchen, cafeteria, gym are all suitable sizes for our programs. The cafeteria and gym are suitable sizes for high school students that are physically larger. Every visitor to come into the building of Wilsonburg would be personally vetted by myself, the PRO, and the secretary. It would be very difficult for a visitor to enter the building and disappear while the secretary must come down the stairs to catch them upon entering the building. The possibilities at the Wilsonburg Building for our United programs are promising and optimistic. Our staff feels that we can provide the current culture we maintain, if not better, at the Wilsonburg Building. We are confident we can. We are not confident that we can do as it is right now in the works. Again, as the planning stages begin for the Gore project, please consider the possibility for the United programs to relocate to the Wilsonburg facility. Please speak with Harrison County's Maintenance and Facilities and in addition to the engineers working on the Gore project to determine which school, Adamston or Wilsonburg, will be cost-effective as a solution with minimal renovation. I am not the authority to make this call. Our mascot at United High School is the phoenix. The phoenix is a mythological bird that arises from the ashes, renewed, ready to live another cycle of life. Please allow the students, the phoenixes of United High School, to live their next cycle in the Wilsonburg Building. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Hudson would like to speak as well.
How are you all doing? I'm Deputy Hudson. I'm the PRO at United High School. I just kind of want to echo some of her sentiments, especially about the entrance. I'm kind of concerned, Adamston, I mean, I don't know where we would have to be to be able to vet everybody that would come inside the building because a lot of times, you know, we might have different people coming in. I don't know if GED is going to be there too as far as trying to vet everybody that comes in the building and then there's a lot of exits at the Adamston building that concerns me. It's a lot easier, I believe, at the Wilsonburg school to actually be able to check, you know, if somebody slips out, it's still in a rural area, whereas if they get outside in Adamston, they're going to be in a residential area and that concerns me because we have, we've had kids at our school leave before and it's kind of nice because we're out 19, you know, a lot of times I can get in my car and nine times out of 10, I can find them and bring them back to the school. I'm concerned that if we're down in Adamston, I'm not going to be able to do that because they're going to slip in. They have what a strip mall, basically, they're right beside the school they could slip into or they'll be in a residential area. So that concerns me that, you know, I'm not sure if one of our kids slip out, if I'm going to be able to find him or what they're going to be doing when they slip out. So that concerns me. And then, I mean, I know Harrison County has a drug problem, but Adamston is kind of known to have a bad drug problem and it concerns me with having at-risk students in that area with the kids that we deal with coming from families that deal with drug abuse and stuff of that nature. So that concerns me. And then also, Adamston is a big building and, like I said, my job is to be, make sure that school is safe and secure and I'm just afraid if an incident or something would happen at Adamston, if I'm on the fourth floor and something would happen on the first floor, that, you know, even seconds can make a big difference if a serious incident were to happen. And I feel like on Wilsonburg that that wouldn't be an issue, everything is on one level. So whether it be de-escalation or any kind of threat, I feel like that Wilsonburg would kind of, you know, kids and everything that we're dealing with, I feel, I would feel a lot safer for our students and staff if we were to go to the Wilsonburg school, just for safety. Like I said, just, I feel like I could get there a lot quicker at Wilsonburg than being on the fourth floor trying to have to respond to something. So, like I said, I just have a lot of security issues with Adamston and I just feel like the Wilsonburg school lays out perfectly for our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think, I'm sorry.
I'm speaking on behalf of the United faculty and I'm also faculty senate president. This was hard to prepare and it wasn't because it's not an important matter, but over the past calendar year and starting into the new year, we've had some real crises with our students at school. Different things affecting students and, like Mrs. Satterfield said, these students come to us and they're, what they bring and their experiences to tell it and to hear it, it's just really heartbreaking. And what we try to provide for them, it's sort of, it makes, when you're looking at a physical structure, it's sort of, what they're dealing with, the physical structure sort of pales in comparison. But that being said, one day over Christmas vacation, I drove down to the Wilsonburg school. It'd been several years since I'd been inside the school and I guess I had never really looked outside. And looking at the exterior, I saw so much opportunity to make space alive for our students. Like they said, a single story, allowing for ease to move throughout the school. At the Gore building now, at least the United teachers, we have contact with every student in that main hall. We just see everyone going by. The other thing about Wilsonburg, it has all that open space. It has a pavilion for an outdoor classroom. The points of egress can be monitored by the staff. The agriculture program expansion, there's just so, so many wonderful opportunities that would be available at Wilsonburg. And if you're looking at the building, infrastructure, and the surrounding area modifications, at first glance, it would, at Wilsonburg would seem to be less costly than at the Adamston school. So that's focusing on the structural part, but I guess the question to ask is where would our students be happier? Our students have been called at-risk. Last week, I learned a new phrase to describe these types of students, "on the margins." They're on the margins. And the role of their point of contact throughout the day has flipped. What we think of as home for all of us, where we go at the end of the day to be comforted, nurtured, rejuvenated, for our students is often empty, dark, cold, and void of any positive interaction. The safe place, the positive environment where adults care and are concerned and interested is found from 7:30 to 2:30 at school. The staff for each of our programs know what being housed at Gore has meant for our students. By moving to Wilsonburg, we are extending the home to include a variety of learning environments, inside and outside, expansion of the green space. We are not buried in the middle of a city block and our schools are getting away from that. We are in a more peaceful environment, a pleasant setting where we can take advantage of the outdoors. Now, the upcoming move has not gone unnoticed by our students and they are concerned and wondering what's going to happen. And we tell them, just wait, that's being worked on. They appreciate the facility and services that our current building provides. It would be a positive boost for them if we could move to a location where we have the ability to introduce new experience, enhance our programs, and let them enjoy the space, the light, the outdoor, and to experience pride in their surroundings by taking an interest in setting up and maintaining those surroundings. This is something many students have found lacking and I think we can make it best work for them at Wilsonburg. I know I speak for the faculty and the staff, everyone that works with us. Our desire is to make our school a positive life experience for those who have been in crisis and have not had those experiences before. We just don't want to make this time in school the best years of their life, but we want to begin to let these students know this is the beginning of the better years of their life beyond the time when they leave the walls of United High School.
Thank you.
I'm Melanie Tillman and I'm one of the teachers working with the Option Pathway Program at United. We're just one of the many alternative education programs housed at UHS. And first, I'd like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve the at-risk students of Harrison County. Good things are happening in our building. I've seen it and I feel very blessed and fortunate to be a part of it. While considering the consolidation of Wilsonburg and Adamston Elementary Schools into what will be the newly renovated Gore building, I ask that you consider allowing the UHS facility to be housed at the former Wilsonburg Elementary. Part of my program, what I do is I help prep students to take the high school equivalency exam. Many of you know that as the GED. It is now called the task test and it stands for Test Assessing Secondary Completion. And it's a difficult test. And it's very likely that the testing center will be located where we will be housed. What's good about the Wilsonburg facility is it has parking spaces. That's a huge advantage for us. Adult ed students will drive themselves to take their test. Also, the fact that the building is one level, it'll make it easier for entering and exiting the building in a timely manner and it will help direct the flow of foot traffic for the adult ed students. Right now, when we have our task test, it's perfect for my students because the facility is on the second floor around the corner from where my classroom is. For adults coming into the building, they've got to check in at the office, go down a hallway, come up the stairs, and find the testing center. And so every test day, we're constantly directing people where to go. So I really think the Wilsonburg building will be a better fit for us logistically. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Adam Hamrick. I represent Evolution High School and Middle School. And I've been here recently, you know about the products that we're having going on through the United High School program. Our agriculture teacher couldn't be here today, so I'm also helping represent that CTE completer program. You've heard many things about the structure of the building. I'd like to talk to you about the exterior. We, the students we deal with and we, they, not the students we deal with, the issues that they come with, that we help them work through, some of them, they'll ruin your day when you hear. And we built such a community that the students know fairly quickly, whenever they come to our building and to our staff in particular, that we're going to help them get through those issues. We're going to help them see that they don't have to be part of the family environment that they come from. They can arise above that. And I've had four students come back to our school this year, to come back and two of them went into the military. They came back in uniform to our school before they even got to go back to their families because we mean so much to them. Two years ago, a young man came back from completing his tenure with the National Guard and he came back in uniform before he came back to his family because he was stationed in the southern part of the state. And I had the unfortunate experience of having to go to his funeral last week, but he came back to us first. So I want to let you know that our program is working, I think you understand that, but it's all about the community and the support we can provide for these students. With the landscape features we have around and the surrounding area outside the building of Wilsonburg, it seems much more inviting. There's a baseball field that the students could be able to use and the agriculture program would be able to utilize their turf and landscape class to be able to upgrade and maintain that field for the community. We have a lot of plans with some grants we received recently. One, we've applied for and we got no red flags back, which is a good sign. A lot of the grants for the freight farm that we talked about, I believe, two meetings ago, they usually come back, over half of the grants come back red flagged, ours didn't. So we got a good chance of that grant. We also just received $3,000 from a separate grant to raise honeybees. And we also have a grant that should be arriving in two years for an unlimited amount of fruit trees. And we have a Fall Festival and through the ag program and some of the students, when they have extracurricular time, or some community service time, they'll be able to maintain that orchard, they'll be able to maintain the grounds, get the community service that is oftentimes court-appointed, and they need a safe area to do that with. And the summer ag experiences, these students most likely don't have transportation to travel from one farm to the other over the summer, but they'd be able to get transportation to our building and we'd be there available at no cost to give them their agricultural experience in a safe, well-maintained community environment. So I want you to consider the exterior of the building as well as the interior for how positive a benefit it would be to our students to be able to be placed at Wilsonburg Elementary. Thank you for your time.
I'm the counselor at United High School. Don't worry, I'm the last United High School personnel, so I only take up, you know, 60 to 90 minutes of your time this evening. So in being the counselor, one of my goals is to build relationships with the students and the faculty of United High School. I've held four different positions through different school, or different counties and at West Virginia University. And in every office that I've held, I've worked to create an environment that builds those relationships with the people that I come in contact with, meaning that I've painted every office that I've stepped foot in and tried to really create an open environment. One of the things that we worked with in the current building that we're in over the summer was to paint the hallways. The hallways were a couple of different colors so that we really worked to create an environment that was going to be welcoming to everybody that came in. So I look at that as just the first step being the building, the facility, where we're meeting our students, and that being the basis of what relationships we build, just providing an environment that they're comfortable in. As you heard my colleagues talk, you know, our goal is to create and foster an environment to where our students feel that they're at home, feel that they can foster their educational learning abilities. And that is not always something that is important to their families or something that they don't realize is going to be important for their futures. So from my standpoint as the counselor and working with those students, I have a relationship with every student, I know their name. And we just asked you to look at that and look at what the facility does and where we're going to be for building the relationships and working with our students. So thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate being on the agenda this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the AED overview and Heart Safe Schools update with Jody Sperry, Coordinator of Nurses, Carol Ward. They'll present before the board the AED overview and Heart Safe Schools update.
Can we not comment on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, if there are comments, yeah, if anyone would like to comment.
I also, in regard to your request, you know, whether it be Adamston, whether it be Wilsonburg, my feeling is, somebody spoke it first, is once have it checked out to make sure, you know, Mr. Ammons, architects and everything, and if they find that building suitable to house it, you know, I see no problem in, you know, you not getting what you wish for, just as long as the building and the structure itself is sound, I see no problem with that, you know. I see the pros and cons as Ms. Bastine spoke about, you know, Adamston, if they leave the building, any school I was ever in, you always got a few runners, okay? And so this way here, if they're in that area, not too many of them are going to want to run from Wilsonburg to somewhere else, but if they're in Adamston, they can definitely, you know, blend into the community and create situations there. So I think once, you know, your request has been made and Dr. Manchin will get with Mr. Ammons and our architects and everything and, you know, do a tour, and if they come back and say, you know, Dr. Manchin makes the final call, says that he doesn't see a problem with it, I don't think that you'll have any problem from the board in regard to that.
And I think before you came, there was some discussion about this. I've discussed it with Dr. Manchin to at least have our architects and the engineers look. From my standpoint, the physical plant portion of it, which is the HVAC and the other things, are newer on Wilsonburg. Aside from the area, I like the space there better than Wilsonburg, but I think we're going to find that the HVAC and the other facilities have been replaced and are a lot newer than what you're going to find at Adamston. So I'm extremely receptive to this.
I think it's a fantastic idea. I'm excited that you guys are excited about it. You're looking at the property, you're looking, you're already dreaming of ideas, how you do use the area better to suit these kids and I think it's a wonderful idea. I really, I'd be all in favor of it. So I can't wait to get it checked out and let's take a look at it and let's make it your new home. I'm totally in favor of it.
My comment is this, I would just like to know, I mean, Gary said that they've been looking at it. Quite honestly, I have not ever heard of this idea until just now. And it's funny to me and how I often tell people, well, come to the meetings or put minds together or whatever. I think sometimes we get so focused on one thing or one thought that it takes a person to think out of the box and everything you have said is absolutely correct. And I would just like to know who that one person out there said, "What about Wilsonburg?" and took a lead on it because it is a fantastic idea and I am all for it. And this just shows, hopefully, everything works out like Doug and Gary said, that it's definitely a feasible option, but I'm really shocked that it just now came to our attention or my attention because I haven't heard it before. I think it's great, 100% for it, I was hoping it works.
All right. Any further comments?
Well, I might, Mr. President, and thank you all for being here. I had the opportunity to walk through the school the other day and was approached by several and brought to my attention. And I appreciate that. I better understand now, since we've been talking about moving these children from the United High School, the depth of your commitment to these students. I do care, these last, last year and this year, how deep do you care? And that's touched my heart because all you have to do is go to a graduation and watch these kids walk across to see. And God bless you for the job you do. The board has made a commitment of putting additional funds to propose to Adamston when we first talked about it. And we have one more budgeting cycle, including this one as well as next year, because it won't be till the following year that we'll actually move. But I, based on that discussion and the direction of the board, which appears to me they're going to be directing me and have indeed directed me to get ahold of an architect and some engineers to look at, there may be a couple of things with the crawl space, there's a few things to make this a workable building. But I can envision out there even a greater site than what you're even envisioning right now, improving the parking out there, improving the space, additional funds for the greenhouse, things of that nature, which these children certainly deserve, all that we can give them and make a difference in their lives. So I think, Mr. President, and if I'm hearing you all correctly, is what I will do is start the process of going out there with some, an engineer and an architect, look at some things, and we'll certainly bring you into the loop, Ashley, as well as several, boy, the entire faculty, keep you apprised of this whole process. As I said earlier, this will not take place next year, it'll be the year after. So we have a little time, but we will certainly work on that and I envision making this thing come together for you guys.
You mean 2001, right? Not 2000?
I'm thinking 2021.
But you're talking about 2021.
21, 22, 21, 22.
But I really think though, the sooner they know where they're going, the better it's going to be.
And we'll certainly do that. I think you'll see, well, you, obviously, we'll be out at Wilsonburg, but when we get to something a little further along, Ashley, I'll let you know and then we'll come over and we'll sit down with your faculty and apprise them where we are. But I think you're going to be happy.
I'd like to thank each of you for coming this evening and expressing your concerns.
Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you for hearing and answering.
Thank you for your commitment.
Okay. Jody.
This is very informal. You all leaving? I'm your nurse. This is the, this is the love I get for being their nurse. Dr. Phillips came, it's probably been three or four board meetings ago, to talk about a initiative that he was wanting to bring across the state, but wanted kind of our blessing to proceed forward, and that was Heart Safe Schools. So talking to Dr. Manchin, we decided to go ahead and let's work on some of our high schools to see if we can get them compliant because we already had a our high schools to see if we can get them compliant, because we already had a lot of the steps in that, and so I'm just kind of here to give you an update. We are working currently on all of our high schools. Today, I did my staff education with Byrd. Kim Cunningham is in the audience. She completed Lincoln's today, and we just submitted it to the state. So, I think we're going to be the first high school, or first school in West Virginia that receives this accreditation for Heart Safe School, and part of that is training your staff, making sure you have the appropriate amount of AEDs, not only in the school day, but outside of the school day for activities, having them in well-lit, well-accessed places with good signage, and so we've worked really hard to get the tools we needed. So, the other schools are close behind.
You said Lincoln?
Lincoln will be.
Which is kind of symbolic, since they're the.
They were, they had the first save, and Holly, Ms. Hawkins, wanted that really bad. She's like, "I want to be the first", and I'm like, "Listen, you go, girl." So, today, we did our staff education, Ms. Cunningham did, and we got all the boxes checked. The Clarksburg Fire Department did a drill, because you have to complete a drill as part of that process. So, I just wanted to give you, we also, since you were, since I was here last, we got an AED in our lobby. I don't know if anybody noticed the AED signs posted as you came in the building. We have an AED right behind the security guard, right to the right of the main elevator, and there were signs posted all over the building, so that we too, here, can be safe, because we bring students and our staff and visitors in all the time. When we were here last, there were a lot of questions about AEDs, and, and there are a lot of myths out there, and so as we were sitting back eating cake, because if you remember, it was Esther's retirement, Dr. Phillips looked at me and said, "We need to create a, a myths page", so we did that. Tina Lucas, myself and Dr. Phillips created this, AED myths debunked, and like, you know, can you accidentally shock somebody? What, you know, all those things, questions you guys had, and we were scrambling, writing them down, and so I'm going to distribute these, this is just for you guys for later, but I also wanted to show you an AED as the Board and what it looks like, because there are different brands in our buildings, and then before we, I leave, don't let me forget to tell you some exciting news about Ms. Carol. So, I'm going to come back, I'm going to distribute these real fast.
Is there a way you could put these out on like Channel 18? This information?
The myths?
The myths? I mean, how do we get this out to the students?
I think it's actually Mr. Vayner. He's in my building too. So, Carol, we'll bring that one up. They're, they're all very similar. This is a newer one that we just purchased, and it's the one that's in the hallway.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's an older version, which a lot of our schools have, so we'll look at this one first, but you basically flip the lid up, flip this up, and it's, it's going to talk to you.
No habla ingles.
There is a, there is a language.
See, that's what I was hoping for.
So, we're going to pull this red handle. And on the pictures on the pads, sorry, it's going to tell you where to put the pads. One's usually here, one's usually here, and it's going to tell you, start CPR, administer shock, call 911.
Does it walk through the steps to CPR?
It walks you through everything. This is the best. This is like the bomb. And, and this one is Wi-Fi enabled, and we literally just got these out of the box, so I don't have it hooked up to the Wi-Fi here, but, let's say Carol goes down and I put this on her, right? And you only apply pads to unconscious victims. If they're talking to you, they don't have a fatal rhythm that you need to shock, right?
Is that one of the myths?
That's one of the myths.
Will it shock you if you're still talking? Okay, good.
No, not unless you're in a fatal rhythm, but the rule is, we don't put pads on unless you're unconscious.
Unconscious.
Because if you're in a fatal rhythm, you will become unconscious very quickly, because it's incompatible with life, right? Those rhythms. So, if I put this on Carol and I call 911, and I'm, if I'm in a school, I call Code Blue and my Code Blue team runs down to help me, this, if I get it, once I get it hooked up to Wi-Fi, will start talking to EMS en route.
Ooh.
And it will tell them what rhythm is happening. It will also talk to Dr. Phillips, who's the Peds Cardiologist at Ruby, and he can advise the, the ambulance what to do when they get there. Besides shocking, there are certain meds you can push. So, you have multiple, and this one is compatible with the ones EMS currently use, and so they unplug from our machine and plug straight into theirs. So, this is the brand that EMS uses. So, eventually, my pie in the skies, I'd like to convert everybody over to these, this one is probably from.
It's safer.
It is safer.
It's safer when you're looking at dealing with cardiac arrhythmias, that en route, they're going to be able to tell you.
To see what's happening.
What medications especially, because not only is shocking, you know, the best route to go when other things aren't available, but when EMS is there, I mean, they're going to be able to push medications that.
That they might not necessarily have known to push, because they're not cardiologists, right? So, this is an older version, these were, this one was dominated, this is the Height Field one, it was in my office, because I was updating it. This is yours, this is WI's Height Field one, and I just updated it with new software. It's two thousand and four, so it's quite old, but it still works, and so you push the button to turn it on.
And then these are the pads.
And actually, these pads are expired, so we can show them how the pads look like. I'm getting new pads. So, if you were wondering, the pictures are on there, and it shows you where to put them on the chest, it will also, it's waiting to try to read a rhythm, okay? So, that's why it's going to keep on repeating. It does talk you through everything. So, these are now, we now have one in every building, some buildings have multiple. Turn it off, because it's annoying, it's persistent. At Byrd, we will have two now in our building. One will be in our baseball complex, which is actually this one, so Height Field will use it in the fall for WI, and we'll use it in the spring at our baseball facility, and then, then we have one for our football facilities that will be on the concession gate, or the gate, so it can also be served soccer, tennis, that area, track. So, we're trying to be very strategic with our locations. In fact, maintenance came today to install my outdoor boxes. So, that's just a quick update, wanted to kind of let you guys know. I'm sure once we get the paperwork back from Lincoln, we'll be having a big old party and get some big accreditation.
Are they near the gyms?
At Byrd, we have this one in the Eagle Lobby near the gym. I also put one on second floor, second base, at the top, because I was trying to make them opposite ends of the building.
Yeah.
Because you need to be to your victim in two, three minutes.
Yep.
Every building is different. So, we just bought a new one for WI, and we're, and the original one is right as you walk in, it's right by the gym, but if you're on third floor, the other side of the building.
Ain't going to make it.
You ain't going to make it, they ain't going to make it. So, so we're putting it near the stairwell on the office side, probably second floor, third floor. So, we're, each building, we're really meeting with the nurses and the administrators of how is a code going to go in your building, who's going to respond, who's going to get it. So, it's going well.
So, all of our buildings have one, but some have two?
Some have two or three, depending on, our high schools, some of them have two or three, because they're covering their outside facilities. So, it's coming along. I'm hoping to have all of our high schools accredited by the end of this semester, and then we'll start working on middle schools and elementary.
What is the cost for the new ones?
This one, they run about nineteen hundred with the box, wall box, and all of the, all the pads and everything you need. This one is a little more efficient in disposables, because one pad, if you, you didn't notice, but there's a button to hit that has a baby on it, it's to child.
I was going to ask you about that.
The same pads can be used for an adult and a child. These older ones, they have different pads, and so when you replace pads, you're replacing, replacing two sets of pads at a hundred and fifty dollars a set.
So, with this one, if you didn't have the child pads?
You'd use the adult.
You could still use the adult, huh?
I mean, obviously, it's covering larger areas, right?
But you can use them. So, anyway, there's the update on that, and then, one quick thing, I just wanted to show you guys, you might notice that the nurses requested to go to a National Association of School Nurses meeting, and that's later in the agenda, but I wanted you to see why. So, at the top of the candidates is Carol Ward, and she has been asked to run for Vice Presidency of the National Association of School Nurses. So, that's a huge honor for us. Nobody from West Virginia has ever been asked to run for the National Association, so we were wanting to go to support her, so.
And where is it?
Well, congrats.
Yeah, she keeps bringing honors to us.
It's in Las Vegas, so don't get excited, but it's.
I think, I think the entire Board should go and support you.
You need some, we need some chaperones, right? So, last year, they were in Denver, next year, we in Austin, but they rotate locations, so.
I can see the paper now, nurses go wild.
Take flexing, Vegas State.
Yeah, take flexing, Vegas State, so.
Unless you put it on Facebook.
Well, that would be smart.
There will be no Facebook. All right, guys, so I'll keep you apprised, I'm hoping that Dr. Phillips responds back that everything's in order for Lincoln, and they will be our first accredited school. I'm hoping maybe we get a banner or something to put outside, then the other schools will follow quickly. I just talked to Fire Department today, and I said, "We're going to do a surprise drill at Byrd, and we're going to just bring a dummy in and call Code Blue", and that's really where, where you see where your faults are and where, "Oh, that didn't work", and, you know, "Nobody got the AED, or we got too many AEDs", so, we're working it out, we're making it safer for our kids. There was a.
How often is the, is a Code Blue training like that called?
Um, well, we have Code Blues frequently, I mean, a couple times a year, two, three times a year, and we're trying to train our, the nurses are trying to train the teachers to be more thoughtful when they call Code Blue, to not call Code Blue when someone vomits, or someone's just hyperventilating, so they're having a panic attack, and so, we're really working, and so that has decreased our number of Code Blues, to be really legitimate. And so, I have an asthmatic turn of blue, you call Code Blue, I'm coming for you, right? But I want to know that it's true and it's real, where someone falls down the steps, or, you know, we've had students have seizures, they have a known seizure disorder, but maybe I had one student tumble down the steps during seizure, that's a true Code Blue, that's, I need to be there. So, these will be yearly, these mock Code Blues, but the staff's not going to know it's mock, and so when they arrive, there'll be a dummy, and they will give them a AED trainer, we'll take the real AED, and we're going to tell them, act like they have no pulse.
So, I want to say something about that, about that.
Yes, I heard, go ahead.
So, we had a student come in today to make up some semester exams, and so, hey, Tag, you're it. So, we had a live student.
Oh, so you put them down?
We did the actual, we did the actual code.
Right.
And did, we put trainer pads on him and so forth. He was, he did, he was great working with him. So, we, we had a real first.
So, you had a real drill. And we'll do that at least once a year, once a school year, and, and more if we find a school needs to work out some bugs. And, and each building presents its own unique sets of problems, whether it be distance and response times, because Byrd is a huge campus, and so, I'm sure we'll find little things that we can improve upon, but we're moving to safer, Dr. Phillips actually just sent us a link, or sent me a link that first day back in a, kind of a whisper, first day back from Christmas break, and a student fell over in class and had sudden cardiac death, and they were trained, they responded, and they got the AED and saved him. So, it does happen. It doesn't happen very often, and we pray it'll never happen, but we have had a save in Lincoln, you know, not, not a month after their AED went up, the ref went down and they saved him, so, we just want to make our schools a safer place.
I think the custodian at UTC, same thing happened to him several years ago.
Who?
And it was, they had to use the AED, yep.
I do remember.
Yeah.
All right, guys, any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, now you feel better about using an AED, and if you need an AED, there's one in the lobby, okay? Hopefully, no one will ever need one here, but.
Jody, how much time, you know, obviously, the first time you do it, you're going to have to listen to.
You will have to listen to it.
What do you say? How much time you have?
Well, they like to have AED pads on the person within two to three minutes to start.
The whole deal has to be, you have to start the whole deal within two to three minutes?
Well, someone's already probably doing compressions.
So, the compression, somebody will probably, okay.
Yeah.
If you find no pulse, someone can start compressions while you're pulling everything out, you're getting the pads out, you're, you're putting the pads on.
So, if you're doing the compressions correctly, then you're.
You're ventilating.
Then you're, yeah, you're getting the blood, you know.
Still the, what, three compressions, one breath? How's that?
It's, no, it's thirty-two. And honestly, in the, they're, they're getting away with breath, they're kind of doing away with the breath, and so if you have someone who you don't know, just compress to the beat of staying alive, you know? Compressions that will save their life.
Can you, can you sing a song for a second?
No.
That's what I was just looking.
You said.
And then actually, on this machine too, if you have to do compressions, it tells you that it's, it, there's a sound that will.
It'll be like click, 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 that you're going to be matching.
Yes.
And it'll say, "Stop compressions, analyzing rhythm, begin compressions again", and so it will, it really talks you through the whole process.
The good thing about it, about it is, in our outer schools, like the South Harrison area, where it takes longer for EMS to arrive, you may have to do compressions and analyze at a longer period of time than what, what you would have to do like in Clarksburg or Bridgeport or whatever. So, that's the good thing about it.
So, yeah.
Do many of you watch The Office, the comedy, The Office? Well, one of the best-known comic sketches ever in the history of television is The Office during teaching CPR. I knew it was in season five, but I just looked, if you ever have a chance, if you have Netflix or whatever, go to season five, it's actually a two-part, it's at fourteen and fifteen. It is absolutely, it is known as the funniest comic sketch in the history of television. It's about CPR, watch it, it is so funny. Every time you guys talk about that, I think about like, staying alive, everything, it's just the best comedy sketch ever, or series.
Well, I have a question for you all. I was just sitting here thinking, would you guys like to see a demonstration at some point?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
CPR using that, because I have the feeling that maybe, I mean, we're so used to it, but it's just.
It's second nature.
Yeah, but for a layperson to not be involved in it and see it, well, I see it a lot, I mean, you know, because I work, but, I mean, for everyone else, it, it is scary. So, that's why I ask if, if at some point.
Bring a dummy in, put them right there, and do it for everyone else? We can all see it.
We'll make one up here.
You can put my face all over it.
Are you volunteering?
I'll volunteer, let's do it, I don't care.
I will tell you, when you talk about dummies, I, I got a dad one year really bad, it was when.
That's, that's hard to do.
When rectal diastate first came out, and.
Where's this going?
He came up to the old office down at the.
Kelly Millie Building.
The building, and one will, "Well, what are you guys going to do about this?", and I'm going, you know, "Friend, this is a pretty big deal", because at the time, I mean, it scared us, it, it scared me, and I remember, "Frank, if you want to try and be a dummy, you go right there".
He backed away pretty quick, didn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have an update on the school-based mental health clinics. Dr. Junkins is not with us this evening, he is being replaced by Senior Operations Manager for Community Care, Brian C. Vassal.
Nice job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the amount of times my name has been miss said, you guys have knocked it out of the park tonight, so.
She gave it to me hooked on phonics, what?
There you go, yeah, the phonics spelling is key, so. Yeah, thank you very much for the chance to, to be here and represent Dr. Junkins. Just, it's cool to be here as a resident of Harrison County and someone who's got kids in Harrison County, and to get to be a part of this, and I, and I love being a part of the school-based behavioral health as well, so, I just want to give a little update. So, again, yeah, my, my name's Brian C. Vassal, I'm Senior Operations Manager. My role is, is kind of facilitating the administrative side of everything we're doing in behavioral health, also want to be a really available contact. You know, our clinicians are seeing patients all the time, so it's not as always easy You know, our clinicians are seeing patients all the time, so it's not always easy to get ahold of them. But if any of you guys have questions, I'm really just in the office and can be really available. So feel free to use me if you've got questions or anything. That's really what I'm all about. So the, the folks from the, had asked for some numbers just to give updates about the number of students we're serving and all that kind of stuff. So the first question was numbers from summertime. And so what that looked like was 190 appointments or visits and 89 patients that we helped. Summertime, that's probably hard to figure out if it's really patients from school-based or patients who see our providers at our clinics, because obviously they're not in school. But that's the number of Harrison County residents under the age of 18 that we saw this past summer. So that's the update there. So it's 89 patients. Academic year up to this point, we've had, at our school-based clinics, 485 visits and we've worked with 78 patients. So again, that's our providers seeing the students in the schools. And then the number of Harrison County students that we're seeing in our clinics, 540 visits and 170 patients that we're seeing in our clinics. So we are serving a lot of folks that, that come into our clinics to see our psychiatrists and our therapists there as well. And then also the question was breaking down how many students are seen from each school. Adamston has 16 students. ALC has two students that see our psychiatrist and then there's about eight students that participate in the groups and the, the Back to Basics work. Liberty High School has 18 students. Mountaineer Middle has 18 students. Northview has 14 and Salem has nine. And the other thing I would just say too is again, my, my biggest priority, so I've been in this role for about a month now, so I'm still kind of drinking from a fire hose kind of thing. But my biggest focus really is retaining our, our staff of providers and case managers who I think is really high quality and also recruiting to add staff because we know the need is, is great. So that's, that's, there's a lot of things I'm supposed to be doing, but that's the one that I'm, is top on my priority list, is reaching out and trying to recruit more therapists and more psychiatry providers so that they can meet the adults' needs in this area, but also especially the students in the schools. Because again, that, we know that that need is almost inexhaustible. So that's actually where Dr. Junkins is tonight. He's actually recruiting a psychiatrist to see if we can woo him to join us, which again would be a great win for us. So we're trying to be very active in that area and I know that the need is greater than what we can provide. People power for, but we're definitely working on that. And I know our, our two therapists especially really enjoy working in the schools. I've had the chance to get to know them really well since I've been at community care and I know they really enjoy working with the students and with the staff at the school. So it, I think it's easy for us to pitch to future therapists that this would be a great thing to step into. So glad to answer any questions as well.
Doctor, what would you...
Not a doctor, but thank you. I didn't play one on TV or stay at Holiday Inn, but...
When I'm talking to a God developed, I go general.
Yeah, there you go, exactly.
What would you, give, give me an example of some of your successes and what does success look like in psychiatry, dealing with the deep part of the mind? Does it change behavior? That is a major, we're in really crisis here statewide, nationwide. Can you give me some examples of how you're changing behavior and does that indeed, your line of intervention, does that change behaviors or what are we doing?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. I'll, I'll answer this kind of personally. So I have, my wife and I, we adopted two kids. We were foster parents and adopted them over a year ago. And so wonderful little dudes, but, but coming with issues that we know we have to work with. And so we actually, it's, it's nice, I can say to anybody who wants to come to community care that I would trust my kids with our practice because I do. They just, Brooke, our seven-year-old, just saw Dr. Junkins last week. So I can tell you exactly how it'll work maybe in, in a few months as he starts this process. But yeah, I think the goal is to help these kids be able to kind of maximize their ability to succeed in the classroom. So for my kiddo, really bright, has impulse control issues, can't quite focus all the time. So the goal is between the school helping with some behavior changes and some structural stuff about how they can help him, that the medicine can help him really focus and kind of be his best self in the classroom. So I think the goal in a lot of ways is to help people do the things that they enjoy as much as they would like. And I could talk to our staff to see like if they could pull out some specific cases of where those kids are really...
You guys administer medicine or...
Yeah, so the psychiatry side of things is prescribing, usually it's prescribing some kind of medicine. And then the therapy side is the talk therapy of sitting down with the therapist for usually 30 minutes to an hour, working through the issues. And they use different types of therapy protocols. And again, depending on what issue a child has, there's a different approach. For example, like PTSD, there's not really a great psychiatric approach, it's really therapy-based. So once you get somebody to that point where you realize that's their big issue, then it's really, you have to double down on the therapy because there's not as much research that says medicine in one way or another can help.
The, the initial consultation, how, how does that take place? Is it principal, teacher? How are you?
Yeah, usually we get referrals from the staff and then we have case managers that work with our therapists. So Lori Singleton is our, our new case manager for Harrison County and we're excited to have her onboard. She has a background working with the state before on the, on the centralized intake so she's experienced a lot of stuff with kids. She will get the referral and then kind of farm it out from there.
So if you're having a particularly difficult student in one of our particular elementary schools, well, that's where we are, right? We're in elementary schools.
No, we're in a couple.
Yeah, in high school team.
Yeah, right. Then, then you're apprised of that, you intervene and, and then I'd like to see, and I'm sure you gave us the numbers, I'd like to, and we talked earlier about some successes. Because like, like I said, we have been debating that with my staff, is how we're going to address these. We're getting a, a number of teachers who are bringing to our attention, students who are really acting out and really having a lot of problems with them. And I'd like you to give me perhaps some of your success stories and let us know how you're intervening and perhaps we need to utilize you differently because we're still getting a lot of requests for help. And, and I see you as a major part and with the training that you have and perhaps intervening and changing behavior, these kids act out a lot and we got a lot of problems out there and we need help. And, you know, we're meeting with teachers constantly, principals constantly. In fact, I had a number of principals in, in my office the other day discussing, we've got some major issues and perhaps Donna, we could continue to look at, at, at expanding your services.
Yeah, and that's our big issue is we need to, our CEO says, you know, if we had 25 therapists show up and apply, we'd hire, and they were good, we'd hire 25. You know, so like the real, you know, there's a, we have a little bit of a labor issue and that's why one of my goals is trying to get really creative and outside the box and not wait for candidates to come to us, but to try to go to them. So today I was up at WV meeting with the social work program there to try to find ways to pitch us as a, as I think a really great organization to some of our students. We already have, both of our Harrison County therapists that are in the schools are both graduates of the WV Social Work Program. And so we really would want to keep strengthening those ties to continue to bring folks right from school and also reach out to their network of other graduates who've been in the field longer. So again, that's, for exactly that reason is the staffing my number one priority because we know how serious the need is and how much, again, so many of the other problems that, that we're working through in terms of substance abuse and stuff affect children and how we need to provide them those resources. So absolutely.
The schools that you mentioned earlier, are those the only ones who are able to get help right now?
Correct, yeah. Our two therapists...
Just because of the lack of staff.
Yeah, exactly. We have weightless in most of those because again, like that's, that's what we have right